I'm Crystal Lynn Geet, President and CEO of the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of myself, the Half Moon Bay Review, and the Half Moon Bay Brewing Company's Brews and Views, we want to thank you for taking the time to watch the Half Moon Bay Candidate District 3 Forum. The forum was recorded on Wednesday, October 7th at 6:00 PM between Adam Eisen and Joaquin Jimenez. I do want to note that at one point during the forum, we did run into internet issues and our moderator had to drop off. We did pause momentarily with candidate's consent to allow Brian to rejoin us and continue the forum, which he then later had to drop off again, and we were unable to get him back. So you will see some variances in the number of people participating in the forum, but we do want to ensure that everything was recorded and nothing was edited, and everything that the candidates said and were asked are included in this broadcast. If you have any questions about this forum or want to reach out to the candidates themselves, please feel free to visit the chamber website, hmbcostsidechamber.com, and we'll be happy to connect you. Again, I'm Crystal Lynn, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, thanking you for taking the time.
All right, hello everyone. I'm Dr. Brian Shepherd. I'm with the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to welcome you all to our candidate forum tonight. We have some questions that are going to be answered by the current mayor, Adam Eisen, and Joaquin Jimenez. I'd just like to start off by saying a well-informed electorate is a prerequisite for democracy. So I'd like to thank both of you guys for coming out here and letting people hear your thoughts on the different questions that the chamber has received. We're going to start this off by having each candidate is going to have three minutes to talk about their introductory statement, and we're going to be asking them a series of 12 different questions, and we're going to alternate back and forth with each candidate going first, and then they're going to have three minutes for a final commentary, and that will close the session. So to start off, we're going to have, Adam Eisen is going to start off with his introductory statement.
All right, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Crystal Lynn and Joaquin. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I really want to thank the Half Moon Bay Review, the Half Moon Bay Brewing Company, and the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event. It's time to build on progress. I've been humbled and honored to serve you in an elected capacity the past four years. Last year, I was your vice mayor, and in 2020, I have served as your mayor. It has been a privilege. This year has been especially challenging. We have faced COVID, rapidly diminishing city finances, fires, protests, evacuations, Black Lives Matter, police restructuring, beach closures, beach openings, business closures, schooling from home, and the list goes on. I've spent many hours working with our county and state leaders to help address these issues. Congresswoman Jackie Speer has endorsed me and said, and I quote, "Adam is a remarkable leader for remarkable times. He's empathetic, smart, and his newsletter is a must-read for the community. Tough times call for great community leaders. Thankfully, Half Moon Bay has Adam Eisen." I worked diligently with Jackie to establish the five-mile radius from home rule that the county ended up adopting at the start of shelter in place. The idea came from a constituent after the first weekend of sheltering in place brought hordes of visitors to Half Moon Bay. The idea was considered a model concept for the state of California. Acquiring Jackie's backing for this concept really brought home how much relationships matter. In politics, ideas do not just move forward unless you can get buy-in from other jurisdictions and elected leaders. I believe strongly that electing someone to our council with endorsements from California State and San Mateo County elected officials will benefit Half Moon Bay moving forward. Experience also matters. Do you remember how you felt when you most recently accepted a new job or new position in your company? At the start, you don't know the systems, the company history, the backstory, or future vision statement. You don't know whom you can trust and even how to get your email established. If you are humble enough, you realize you have a lot to learn. That was me four years ago. I was that new person being elected to a new position I knew very little about. Four years later, I've gained a tremendous amount of knowledge. Our state senator, Jerry Hill, says Adam Eisen has been a vocal and assertive advocate for Half Moon Bay, building strong relationships with local and regional officials. We need leaders like Adam Eisen who will work collaboratively to address the issues of importance to Half Moon Bay and the coast side. I have the relationships established. I have the experience needed. It's time to build on progress and keep Half Moon Bay moving in the right direction. I humbly ask for your vote.
All right, thank you, Adam. And now, Joaquin, you have three minutes for your intro.
Thank you. My name is Joaquin Jimenez. I'm an immigrant to Half Moon Bay. I came to Half Moon Bay at the age of 13. I went to school in Half Moon Bay, Cunha High School, graduate high school. Went to college, attended California State University Chico. I received my degree in sociology with a minor in ethnic studies, Chicano studies. After graduating, I came back to my community. One of the conversations before I left Chico, one of our professors, I commented to him that I was going back to my community, back to, you know, to work in my community. And he said, you know, that's not that easy to go back to your community. So I came back. One of my first jobs here in Half Moon Bay, I worked for the school district for several years. I was a teacher at Hatch Elementary School, 5th grade merchant teacher. From the district, I transitioned to the Juvenile Correction Department here in San Mateo County. I was a juvenile correctional officer for about 15 years. During this time, I was also a volunteer with different organizations here on the coast. The Boston Girls Club, I was a translator for the Rotary Care Clinic. I also worked for a nonprofit organization doing, implementing programs for youth here in the community of Half Moon Bay and the San Mateo County in general. During my time in, working with the department, the operation department, I was also an advocate for the community here in Half Moon Bay. I was a voice for the Latino community. I had one of the founding members of the Latino Watch Street Council that we came together about six years ago. It was then that we, the Latinos, you know, came out of the shadows. We started attending city council meetings, addressing different issues from our community. We formed a council with the current, with the, then he was a city council member, Rick, who gave us the opportunity to come together. With that, a lot of the issues that came, you know, came up, you know, put me in a position to be able to build community, to be able to learn about diversity, to be able to be a person of the community. When I decided to run for city council, it was not an easy decision for me. There was a lot of things I had to think about. But I realized that I had a lot of support from the community. The last six months, I really found out that there was a lot of support and decided that it was time, and it is time. Both for Joaquin Jimenez. Thank you.
All right, Joaquin, thank you very much. So the chamber solicited questions from the community, and we have 12 different questions that we're not going to answer, ask the candidates. We're going to be starting off with, Adam Eisen is going to start off, and then followed up by Joaquin Jimenez, and then we're going to alternate. So for the second question, Joaquin will start, and then Adam will follow up. So Adam, with you, the first question. Why did you choose to run for this council as your path to improving the community?
So running for city council was very important to me. About when my, when my city council time started many years ago, there was a bridge that was out, it was a roadway bridge from my mother's house directly to my house. And it was hard for our children to be able to get across that bridge. I had written to city council, and I asked them to do something about it. I had ideas. I brought many people to the council to talk about what they could do to help with this bridge. Not much was done, and it wasn't moving at the pace that I wanted it to be done. At that point, I got very involved. I got together and learned how to communicate to our county officials. And from there, we were able to get the bridge fixed instead of a four-year timeline to an 18-month timeline. And that started my whole progression into why I got interested in city politics. I knew and learned how to make a difference, and I knew how to get community behind me to be able to make that difference happen.
All right, thank you, Adam. Joaquin, why did you choose to run for the, for the council as your path to improving the community?
Well, first of all, it is time. You know, here in the community in Half Moon Bay, we continue to talk about equity. Equity this, equity that, you know, and we're looking for equality. And I'm the first Latino person to run for city council here in Half Moon Bay to represent the voice of about 30%, 32% of the population of Half Moon Bay. And I'm not neglecting anybody. I'm the voice for our community. That's what equity is. About six years ago, when we came out of the shadows, I made a decision that one day I would have the opportunity to run for city council. And it did. It came the opportunity. It put me in a position that I saw the community as a big support for what was going on right now during the pandemic. And it took me a while to figure out if I was really ready for a position like this, to see that community was ready, and the community is ready, and I'm ready. And I'm here to run for city council.
All right, thank you. Question number two. Joaquin, you're going to start off with this one. How will you balance being present for the many meetings and functions needed to participate in council while maintaining your other life and/or job commitments?
Okay, how can I balance my life running and running for city council, taking a position as a city council member? I have been doing that. I've been attending city council meetings for several years, for about six years. I mean, I've stayed up till about midnight because the city, city council may have made a decision, you know, on different initiatives, proposals. I take my time reading proposals that are offered for our community. I take my time to have conversations, to build relationships with our community. I have been building relationships with a lot of members of our community. So balancing my life with the city council with the responsibility is a big responsibility, and I'm ready.
All right, thank you. Adam, how will you balance being present for the many meetings and functions needed to participate in council while maintaining your other life and/or job commitments?
Yeah, I have been doing this job for four years while being a parent of two young sons, having a full-time job, coaching two soccer teams, and volunteering continuously in our community. On a weekly basis, I have meetings with our city manager, many people that want to meet with me to discuss their project or ideas, subcommittee meetings, closed-session meetings, hours of reading staff reports, special council meetings, and an average of about 50 emails that I need to respond to daily for city council. Time management skills are critical for an effective city council member. My time management training skills that I acquired in my 20 years in corporate America have served me well. In fact, I am not sure I would have survived without them. I have responded to every email sent to me over the past four years on council. I've met with countless members of the community. I have made sure to build relationships with our federal, county, and state officials. I have proven to you that I can manage my time effectively and will continue to do so.
All right, question number three. Joaquin, I'm going to start with you. What steps will you take to create more affordable housing, help first-time homebuyers, and help homeowners to keep their home?
Thank you. I really like this question. For some time, you know, I grew up in Half Moon Bay. I saw the development of Half Moon Bay, the affordable housing, South Main, Moonbridge, or farm workers. Right now, in the, during the last years, for the last six years, that's one of the things I have been advocating for, affordable housing in our community. I have built a lot of relationships with different groups in our community and have identified locations in Half Moon Bay to build affordable housing. We have identified prime locations in a central, central area. One of the locations is a, an empty lot that sits right next to the Catholic Church. I have met with Father Jose. We have talked about the location, about the possibility of building affordable housing in a sustainable way. You know, that site is actually within walking distances to everything or community needs, or schools, or clinic. It's right next to the sheriff's department, towards shopping centers. So that's a prime location, affordable housing.
Okay, Adam, what steps will you take to create more affordable housing, help first-time homebuyers, and help homeowners keep their home?
We've done a lot in Half Moon Bay on affordable housing. This has been a top priority for the past four years, and I've been on council during that entire time. We have a specific fund addressing affordable housing. Half Moon Bay cannot meet this challenge single-handedly. Relationships with developers, nonprofits, county and state officials are critical. One of the first attempts we made to address this issue was the expansion of the accessory dwelling unit program. The important stipulation for new accessory dwelling unit development is that it prohibits the property from being used for short-term rentals. Very important. The most significant step in our goal to achieve affordable housing development is our land use plan. And I appreciate Joaquin taking the time to appreciate the work that council has done because in that land use plan are all the plots that he referred to. Seven years in the making, which is about to be sent to the coastal mission, for coastal commission for certification. This document has important provisions for affordable housing, including workforce housing on agricultural land, zoning for affordable housing developments in the downtown core, and incentives to encourage that development. As Joaquin acknowledged, the plan does have three areas near downtown that are zoned for affordable housing development. It is the biggest policy issue that we have ever taken on in this town with regards to affordable housing.
Then now to question number four. Adam, we're going to start with you. What is your plan for helping the economic recovery of the businesses within the city?
Economic recovery, it's a great question, and there, it's exactly what you're saying. There are plans needed. Developing a master plan for economic recovery post-pandemic will be a top priority for me if I am re-elected. Kudos to the Half Moon Bay businesses who have figured out some ingenious way to keep their businesses afloat during these difficult times. When the pandemic hit, I asked the city to try to help the restaurants by launching a pilot project to close downtown area traffic so that tables and chairs could be utilized for takeout dining. Our community development department made options available for all business, restaurant, retail, and personal care. Permits were made available for sidewalk use, private property over-the-counter use, and in-street encroachment use, allowing businesses to stay solvent during this unprecedented time. Last night, during our city council meeting, I urged council to adopt a letter to our governor asking for specific guidelines for group accommodations at our local hotels to try to spur tourism business. There is no question in my mind that this subject needs to be a top priority next year. Just as we did with our master plan and Parks and Rec bike plan, we need to have an economic recovery plan.
All right, Joaquin, what is your plan for helping the economic recovery of the businesses within the city?
Last year, around September, one of the biggest, probably the biggest nursery here in Half Moon Bay was Costa de los Doros, Half Moon Bay, Bay City Nursery. About 250 employees became unemployed. It was then that I pretty much took the streets of Half Moon Bay, of the coast side, trying to find employment for these families that became unemployed. Being unemployed in our community is very tough, especially when it came close to the holidays. When the pandemic hit, I already built relationships with businesses in the area, from Princeton to Half Moon Bay, restaurants, shops. Isn't that an easy thing to do? It's going to be hard to recover from the pandemic. But part of my priority is to build a strong economy that will benefit our community, create small sustainable businesses that will give the opportunity for community to benefit. Creating small farm co-ops or farm workers is something I've been working on for about three years, and we are ready to implement them, to create and build a strong economy.
All right, question number five. We're going to start with Adam. If we had another pandemic or like event during your term, what would you do to help with, with community safety?
Community safety from a pandemic perspective. It's not over yet. We're still in it. But what have we learned so far? We have an inadequate system for beach closings and need a plan for it. When 4th of July was approaching, a time when the pandemic weight was on the rise in San Mateo County, I thought closing our beaches was the safest thing to do and was supported by many others who urged me to do so. This required a massive coordination effort that could not have happened without the support of our governor, who agreed to close state beaches. We learned that it does not make sense to shut down our beaches if state beaches remain open. It only works with a full coordinated effort, and there are eight jurisdictions that need to be on the same page. I'm working with Jerry Hill to ensure we have a plan moving forward. If I'm elected again, I pledge to make this happen. Also, in talking with a member of our Latinx community, I learned that daytime testing for COVID was a problem for that community. I brought this to council, and just Monday, we initiated our first nighttime testing. I initiated the weekly mayor's letter when the pandemic hit in an attempt to guide the community and provide information on a regular basis. The response to this weekly letter has been very positive. Emergency preparedness is one of the top priorities, and going through the events of this year, it is clear we have a lot of work to do on this area.
All right, Joaquin, if we had another pandemic or like event during your term, what would you do to help with community safety?
It's something I've already been doing. You know, when the pandemic, since the pandemic hit, I've been on the front line since March. The pandemic hit, I've been on the front line, bringing PPE to our farm workers, essential workers, providing resources for our community, in phone calls, communication meetings with city staff. Working with ALAS has given us the opportunity, working with the county, other organizations, about how we can provide resources to our community. You know, when we first got the testing done here in Half Moon Bay, it was us who brought it up to the city, that we needed to get tested in Half Moon Bay, and the city went to the county, and the county gave us a first testing site for our community here in Half Moon Bay. Being on the front line is not, isn't an easy thing. I'm exposed to it every day, seven days a week, always providing resources for the community that makes sure that they're okay. When the pandemic hits again, it's just about redoing what we have done already, yes, do it better, providing resources for our community to stay alive.
Okay, question number six. Joaquin, we're going to start with you. The Latino community represents a significant portion of the community. How will you engage them during your term to ensure they are as represented in governance?
Thank you. You know, when the Latino community found out that I was running, many conversations came up. I have a strong relationship with the community in general in Half Moon Bay, especially with the Latino community. To many of them, I already won. Yes, to see me run for city council at Half Moon Bay to represent, to give the, to give the voice for the Latino community, it's something that I didn't think I was going to feel. I didn't think I was going to see it right now. The support that I'm receiving from the community, the support that they are receiving from me, puts me in a position. I'm not going to say 100% of the Latino population is behind me or will endorse me or will actually work for me, but probably 99.9% of the population of the Latino community, I have their vote. So in getting them engaged into politics, into our community, it's on my priority. Have them come forward, attend city council meetings, attend community fight school district meetings, and we are moving forward altogether.
All right, Adam, the Latino community represents a significant portion of the community. How will you engage them during your term to ensure they are as represented in governance?
Well, first, I want to say that I've been engaging the Latinx community for every year that I've lived here in Half Moon Bay, and even more so since I've been on city council. I love being part of a diverse community. I acknowledge there are unique needs of the Latinx community in Half Moon Bay, and I'm heartened by the efforts of our staff and council to ensure this community has a voice. Spanish listening sessions, Spanish net programs, hiring our Latino outreach manager. My children are both engaged in the Spanish immersion programs in our school and speak Spanish fluently. I coach soccer teams and speak with the Latinx community as they drop their children off at practice. Belinda Ariaga, Director of ALAS, has stated publicly at many occasions, and Joaquin says this as well, "This council has done more to bring the Latinx community out of the shadows than any council has before." But I also acknowledge the unique needs of other sectors of our community. As mayor, for the first time in Half Moon Bay's history, we raised the pride flag over city hall and at the library. I'm endorsed by Jeannie Vargas of Coast Pride. I was honored to kneel and speak at the BLM rally at the Jetty. The Cleve family organized this rally and asked me to speak. I'm endorsed by Michelle Cleve. We want to celebrate the unique contributions that all groups bring to the larger community and want their voices to be heard and acknowledged.
All right, question number seven. Joaquin, we're going to start with you. With things shifting in the Supreme Court, how will you ensure our minority citizens retain their rights on a local level?
During my time here in Half Moon Bay for about over 20 years, I've been a voice for the community. I have been educating our community about their rights. I have done a lot of education programs around that for several years. So this is not new for me. It's not new to our community. Educating our community on their rights is something we all have to do. Being part of the Latino Watch Street Council in Half Moon Bay, working for Puente de la Costa Sur de la Nueva Escadera, working for ALAS here in, in Half Moon Bay, has put me in the position where I can reach out to the community and do educational programs on different things, mainly on knowing their rights. Working with organizations like IAG has put me in a position to educate our community about their rights. It's something we have to do. That's what Half Moon Bay has done part, but most of it has come from organizations and people like me. One of my endorsers, Belinda, Belinda Ariaga, good friend of mine for a long time, endorsed my campaign because she knows that I'm out there on the front line, educating our community about their rights.
All right, Adam, with things shifting in the Supreme Court, how will you ensure our minority citizens retain their rights on a local level?
Well, first and foremost, it's a big change, and I am nervous about it personally on what it might mean to the country as a whole. The biggest thing I can do on this level is educate, again, similar to Joaquin. And through that, generally, what I'm doing is I generally represent the Half Moon Bay families here in Half Moon Bay. A big portion of my constituency are the families here that go to the schools, the teachers that teach at the schools. And recently, I held a roundtable with different children online, and we talked about the different topics that are coming up on the ballot. And we went through each one, and we described what we were in detail, and everybody had a back and forth on what it meant and how they would vote differently on it. There were many ethnicities and different types of children on that call, and they got to learn, you know, how to debate and how to talk about the different topics. One of the topics was the Supreme Court and what it might mean to the changes here in our society if that were to happen, and how to advocate against certain things that they feel very passionate about moving forward. So that, that's what I'm doing.
All right, question number eight. We're going to start with Adam. How will you work to rebuild the city's diminished finances through new revenue sources and help avoid future budget cuts?
Yeah, so the city has taken a budget hit. Everybody knows this. The city is extremely reliant on the transient occupancy tax. It is the tax that people pay when they stay at hotels. My mom and dad taught me the value of saving for a rainy day, as well as saving for the future. I apply those lessons along with my business background to our city budget. When I first arrived on council, I studied our budget. I quickly realized that we needed to establish I quickly realized that we needed to establish a robust emergency reserves, and we are lucky we did. We are projecting a downturn possibility in our economy, but I had no, we were projecting one, but I had no idea it would be this big and from this pandemic. As I said, Half Moon Bay is very reliant on the transient occupancy tax. We are one of the top 10 cities in California with reliance on this transient occupancy tax for our revenue. Managing finances during this pandemic has been especially challenging and required tough decisions. I led the charge on city council to decrease spending, and I know it ruffled some feathers with my co-city council members. But it was clear to me that we were facing dramatic decrease in revenue, and we needed action. One of the things I've done is I've taken our short-term rentals here in Half Moon Bay, and I figured out how to make sure we get the maximum amount of money from that tax that they were already supposed to be paying to the city. The the actions I've implemented to make that happen have increased our city's finances dramatically, and they will continue to do so into perpetuity.
Joaquin, how will you work to rebuild the city's diminished finances through new revenue sources and help avoid future budget cuts?
You know, one of my top priorities on my campaign is about building a strong economy. When the city closed, the city was not ready. The city was not ready at all. We were not ready. These families were not ready. To be able to educate our community about creating small businesses, something that will benefit us all, it will benefit the economy of Half Moon Bay. Going back to the co-ops, I've had a lot of conversations around the community about what it would mean to build small co-ops, farming co-ops, restaurant co-ops, small business co-ops, that will actually will benefit our community, will benefit our economy. It's not an easy thing to rebuild after this pandemic, not easy at all. But we're gonna do it. We can do it. Educating our families or community to build our economy, and that's one of my priorities, to build a strong economy.
Thank you. It looks like we lost Brian in the wonderfulness that is the Zoom environment. So I am going to continue on. The next question, we'll start with Joaquin. Make sure I set my thing. Since wildfires are increasingly more destructive, how will you help assist future victims?
Well, going back to that, I have been doing that. When the fires happened, when I was working with Pescadero with Puente, I built a strong relationship with the community of Pescadero, San Gregorio, La Honda, Loma Mar. When the fires happened, I was in contact with them to make sure that they were safe, make sure to evacuate, make sure that they will have resources. To this day, right now, I am still looking for resources for families that were evacuated for two weeks, that became unemployed, families that lost their home. I'm in contact with the family that still stays at one of the hotels, providing resources for these families, finding jobs for them. Preparing our community for another fire is something we have to do. Community preparedness, emergency preparedness, is a plan that we have to start implementing soon. We have to develop plans in case we got another fire, and we have to be able to provide resources for families, like the families from Maño Nuevo, from Pescadero, from San Gregorio, La Honda, and Loma Mar.
Thank you, Joaquin. Adam, since wildfires are increasingly more destructive, how will you assist future victims?
Many topics here. So if we're talking fire abatement, we currently have a program with our goats that we go out and clear the brush in different areas to make sure that the fires are taken care of in terms of the brush removal. Second, there is in our general plan a whole chapter dedicated to what we're going to do from what we can do to protect our citizens moving forward with fire and where the areas are that are at most danger and what we can do about them. The other day, I just met with Don Horsley, who's endorsed my campaign as well, and talked about how we can collaboratively work to ensure, especially the trees that are eucalyptus. There are a bunch of eucalyptus trees here in Half Moon Bay, and there are some in the county as well that we are looking for a project to figure out what we can do to make sure that those aren't quickly combustible and capture fire in Half Moon Bay and beyond. When the fires happened, my biggest thing that I worked with, I worked with Cameron Palmer, who graciously offered his area, and we used Smith Field, and we opened it up so RVs could park there for the fire evacuees, and we has the evacuees at our house as well as our neighbors, and I made sure that that community was accessible.
Thank you, Adam. Next question, we'll start with Adam. What resources and facilities would you support adding to Half Moon Bay for kids?
All right, the pandemic has been hard on kids, and they are used to playing with each other. I have, one of my first things I did, I lobbied to get the skate park open as soon as possible. We were able to open that park. There were some county restrictions we had to overcome, but we got it back. Before the pandemic, we were making a lot of progress in developing plans and programs to encourage children to participate. We worked on re-establishing our improving relationships with the Boys and Girls Club and the Cabrillo School Board, both of which are very close to me, as I work with both very closely. We have given funds to ALAS for their Mariachi Kids Program, the Coastal Rep Children's Theater Program, the Cabrillo Foundation, and many others. We have made Poplar Beach more accessible. Our recreation department has started summer camps for kids and made sure that our summer concerts involve children, whether it was an intermission performance or the Young Actors Workshop and Coastal Rep Children's Theater. Last year, in conjunction with the Bound Downtown Business Association, we started the first downtown Halloween event. More importantly, we have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which addresses the changes that the city hopes to make to all our parks so that kids can make good use of their neighborhood parks.
Thank you. Joaquin, would you mind if we paused for one second to allow Brian to re-enter the chat?
No, I don't mind at all. It's fine. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Joaquin, what resources and facilities would you support adding to Half Moon Bay for kids?
You know, during the pandemic, a lot of our kids, they stayed home from school. And working with the community of Half Moon Bay, I found out that a lot of the families didn't have the resources. We actually started a new program. We started a new education program, a reading program, collaborating with the University of San Francisco and professors and students to go into the farms and work with their students. To be able to use some of the facilities, you know, here in Half Moon Bay for kids is one of my priorities. And one other thing, something that we started a long time ago, when I was volunteering with the Boys and Girls Club, thinking about what programs can we implement in Half Moon Bay for youth. What it came out, educational programs, for kids, you know, with equity, they're not well represented on their equity, they don't have access to good internet service, they don't have access to computers, they don't have access to laptops. So for me, being able to provide educational programs for students and provide them with laptops, with hotspots and Wi-Fi is a priority.
Thank you, Joaquin. We'll start the next question with Joaquin. Unfortunately, my internet has been spotty at best, and we have lost Brian again. Joaquin, do you support the growth of commerce, the growth and commercialization of cannabis in Half Moon Bay?
No, I do not support the growth or cultivation of our cannabis in Half Moon Bay. When it was brought to us about three years ago, the possibility of growing marijuana here in Half Moon Bay, you know, cannabis, we looked into it. For Latino community, a lot of the members of our community, being cannabis, a federal offense to grow it. It will affect our community. If you are not a US citizen, and you cannot work in industries like this, you cannot get a job growing cannabis in the coast. If you're in the process to becoming a US citizen, you'll be affected. When it was brought to our community about cannabis, it put a lot of fear in our families. There was already fear because of ice raids coming into our community. Now, thinking about giving the opportunity to the federal government to come into our community, to do raids, it was putting a lot of fear. So no, I do not support growing cannabis in Half Moon Bay. Our land, our farms are to grow fruits and vegetables and beautiful flowers for families and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Adam, do you support the growth and commercialization of cannabis in Half Moon Bay?
Yeah, let's be clear. Recreational cannabis was legalized in January 2018. Every city and county were then responsible to regulate how they were going to deal with it. Half Moon Bay had countless town hall meetings. Joaquin very clearly came to those meetings and supported his community and said that he was against cannabis. This always confused me a little bit because I had looked at cannabis as a way to support our local agricultural community using existing greenhouses, and many farmers came to me and said, "We have greenhouses. Can we please have other crops that we can grow?" This would allow the town to preserve open space and offer alternative income sources for farmers and the town. Myself and the rest of council decided to put the matter on the ballot and have our townspeople give their input directly. We felt this was the fairest process to take. The town was split on the issue, and we needed a vote of the people to help decide. As you know, the town overwhelmingly passed the measure on the ballot. Personally, I'm happy the townsfolk were agreeable on allowing starter plants to be grown in Half Moon Bay. One of my priorities is to preserve as much agricultural land as possible. I do not want to see our ag land get developed if we can avoid it. I also appreciate that we are looking for ways for our farmers to diversify and for the city's income to be diversified as well.
Thank you, Adam. And this will be our final question. We will start with Adam. Graffiti at the beaches appears and stays for months on end. How will you make it more difficult for graffiti to appear over and over again?
Yeah, so I support what we have on our city's website regarding graffiti. The city of Half Moon Bay works to maintain a clean, inviting, safe, and comfortable place for the people that live here. The mission of the graffiti abatement program is to beautify the city by preventing and removing graffiti. The involvement of the community is essential with these efforts. We do have a graffiti abatement hotline. My son and I used it recently. We called the line the other day to remove some unattractive language that was graffitied on a sign near Highway 1 and 92. Within a day, the city had used chemicals to remove the offensive language. I'm extremely appreciative that the city was so responsive. We all want a beautiful community. We need a beautiful community. We deserve a beautiful community. If there is graffiti that needs to be removed, please call the hotline listed on our website, and we will make sure it is removed. Thank you much.
Thank you, Adam. Joaquin, graffiti at the beaches appears and stays for months on end. How will you make it more difficult for graffiti to appear over and over again?
When I heard about the graffiti on the beach, I saw it on social media about different areas in Half Moon Bay that were, that had graffiti. One of the first things that I did was actually run my bike over there to look at the graffiti, to see what it was, what was written on the walls, to learn about what it was, to educate myself about who was doing this graffiti. And I, what I found out, it was not our local community that was doing this. This was people coming to visit our community. By building a relationship with our community, one of the solutions that I want to bring to the table is about creating small groups in our community to beautify our community. We know it's not easy for the city to come up with a budget, to take care of our trails, to take care of our streets, to take care of the garbage at the beach, or the graffiti at the beach. It will be to invite our community members to get together and to protect the beaches, to beautify our beaches, you know, to clear, to paint over the graffiti, to remove graffiti, and to educate our community about graffiti. And again, we love Half Moon Bay. Half Moon Bay is beautiful. Let's maintain it like that.
Thank you, Joaquin. Now, we are going to allow each candidate to give final thoughts. We will start with Joaquin.
Thank you. One of the many reasons I'm running for city council is about equity, about creating a diverse community, about being inclusive of our community. During the last years, I've been able to build strong relationships with a lot of community members, with a lot of leaders in our community. I am endorsed by three of the city council members of Half Moon Bay. Three out of four city council members endorse me. I'm endorsed by a very diverse group. Belinda Riaga, your friend of mine, endorsed me. She knows my work. She's seen me on the front line. Business owners on Main Street, if you walk down Main Street, you pretty much will see my name all over the place. I have been able to build a relationship with business owners, with community members. I've engaged into a lot of conversations while taking my walks, while taking my bike rides around the beach. Being a candidate for city council has put a lot of pride into our community, not just the Latino community, into the whole community. It's a feeling that I, every day, that I have the support of the community. My supporters, you will find them from Montero to San Gregorio, maybe Pescadero. If you go over to San Bruno, Hillsboro, you might see some of my signs over there as well. If you're out of San Francisco, you will see some more of my signs. I've been able to create, to build relationships, very strong relationships. I have the support. They have my support. When we say about running, you know, for our city council, it's like, I'm not running, I'm staying. This is my community. Together, we can build for our community. We can create a sustainable community, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Adam, your final thoughts?
Yeah, first of all, Joaquin, I'm so happy you're running for council, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the years. And I appreciate your community, your dedication to our community. So let me start off. Relationships matter. Experience counts. It's time to build on progress. Why am I running again? My wife and I settled in Half Moon Bay almost 20 years ago. My sons were born here and attended public school here. My mother and stepdad live here. This is my home and my community. I hope to serve and build on the knowledge and experience I have gained over these past four years. When I began my term, I discovered immediately that being effective on city council would require a steep learning curve. I needed to understand how the city was organized and how to get things done. It was important to establish relationships with state, federal, and county officials with whom the city needs to collaborate. I needed to study our budget and what to do and how to make the city solvent. I needed to familiarize myself with our various nonprofit agencies, who are such a great support to the city. I had to gain knowledge about our infrastructure issues, including but not limited including but not limited to our sewer plant that we own with El Granada and Montara, which beaches, bridges, and roads were under Half Moon Bay jurisdiction, where our ditches and watercourses are, our land use plan, and how Sequo works, litigation issues, Half Moon Bay history, who owns what in the city, how to communicate with our residents, our environmental issues, our past city contracts, and again, the list goes on and on. Trust me, it's a lot of learning, and I'm still learning. But here's the thing, folks. Residents of Half Moon Bay deserve a council member they can trust to spend the time to read the staff reports. I do that. Develop important relationships with state, federal, and county officials. That is why I have endorsements from Jackie Spear, Jerry Hill, Kevin Mullins, Don Horsley, and others. Safeguard our city's finances, something I am passionate about. Listen to all voices in the community, email responses, some eliciting input from families in the community, and meetings with constituents. Proactively communicating to the community, my weekly mayor oral letter, which has been a huge success for the community and has gotten so many more people involved in politics. Repair and maintain our infrastructure and demonstrate leadership skills. I am that person. My youthful energy and business acumen are attributes that are definitely needed on this current city council. Relationships matter. Experience matters. It's time to build on progress. I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you, Adam. And with that, it concludes our candidate forum. I want to extend my sincerest thank you for both of you being willing to join us for this and be a part of this process. I know the constituents of Half Moon Bay really, really appreciate it. The chamber really appreciates it, the review appreciates it, and so does HMB Brewing Company Brews and Views, who are our partners in this process. And with that, we bid you good night.